Wow, I even scared myself.
She's the man with authority on the first night.
Any que... David, do you have any question of who's in charge?
I don't know.
It is my privilege to call the Advanced Transportation District Board Meeting on February 24th, 2015 to order. At this moment, we'll take a moment of reflection. If you will now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jeff, do we have any announcements?
Not at this time.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Minutes. Do we have a motion to, for approval of minutes on the December 16th?
Some moved.
We have a motion in second. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, do we have a motion to approve the Board Meeting Minutes for the January 27th, 2015 meeting?
Actually, you've moved for the entire consent agenda?
Oh, can we do it all together?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, so we don't have to do it separate. All right, so both the minutes have been approved then?
Yeah, all A and B are approved with consent.
Okay. So do we have a, so we've also done the financial report?
Yes, because that was just an informational report.
Okay.
Yes, we just accepted that report.
All right, I'll learn. Item number four, do we have a legal briefing?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone does not want to adjourn? All right, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All right, at this time, I call the VIA Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, to order. Jeff?
So I'll go into announcements at this time?
All right.
Okay, there, I'd like to make some acknowledgements at this time. First of all, our 2014 United Way Community Campaign, we've tallied the results and I'd like to report that we had a tremendous success. Together, our employees raised a record-setting $118,000 to donate to the United Way. That's the highest amount that VIA collectively has gathered in its history. This is also the fifth consecutive year that we raised over 100, which means over the last five years, over 100,000, which means over the last five years, we have donated over a half million dollars to United Way. Very pleasing, I personally really respect that organization. They've been helpful to me in times of my life and it's great that we are able to return to the community the way the community supports us. And part of the reason for our success is that we have a tremendous steering committee. And this year, I have to say, the steering committee went above and beyond scheduling special events, including a karaoke event that one of the steering committee members robbed me of the prize for. And so I'd like to introduce the steering committee, Marcus Peoples. And if you'd stand and we'll acknowledge you, Marcus Peoples, our Vice President of Human Resources, who's the Executive Chair of the campaign and the winner of the karaoke contest. Yes. Just so everyone knows, Marcus did design the evaluation process as well. Robert Valdez, who is a steam cleaner operator who represents fleet and facilities for ATU. Robert, thank you. Kimberly Carter, bus operator representing transportation for the ATU. Kim. Where is Kim? You did go to the back, Kim. Thank you for your help. Kim is very enthusiastic. And then finally, Tony Luna, Community Relations Coordinator, representing administration. So these are the four that steered us this past year. This coming year, we're looking forward to setting a new record. So those of you that return, you now know where the threshold is set, right? Thank you guys so much. Every year, the American Advertising Federation holds the American Advertising Awards, also known as the Addys, to recognize the very best in advertising work. This year's awards were presented just this past weekend and the VIA team joined with Creative Civilization to receive honors for nine Addy Awards, two of which were silver and the remaining were gold. Eight of the awards were for the Rider Story campaign that we did on television and the internet. You recall the young millennial woman, the attorney who was visually impaired who uses the bus to get to work, and then the retired gentleman. And the other award was presented for the community video, which introduced VIA's new branding, which also won the Ad Wheels Award from the American Public Transportation Association. That's one with a future boy, as I refer to him. These are great honors and so I would first of all like to, from among staff, recognize VIA's Manager of Marketing and Promotion, Steve Serna, for his work in developing. Steve, please stand up, be recognized. And then I would also like to, and I would just read off the whole team if you'd all stand up from Creative Civilization, L Aguilar, Gisela Gerard, Joseph Guerra, Stephanie Salazar, Jay Moncada, Kirsten Forkheim, Tony Ellard, Wendy Morales, and Melissa Garcia. Please stand up. Thank you, Creative. Congratulations to everyone. And so I'd like to now kind of move forward to this year's advertising. As you know, we presented IGR earlier, our new Text the Safeway Ride VIA advertising campaign. So we figure we'll got some Addys again this year, right? VIA developed this campaign to remind people that despite the fact that you cannot text while driving, which is of course the safe thing to do, not to text while you're driving in San Antonio, you can still text and ride, which is one of the advantages of riding VIA, that you can make use of that time and not be behind the wheel. And so this campaign includes television ads, digital ads, billboards, and once again, we recognize Creative Civilization team for their work to develop this bilingual campaign. And I also want to recognize actually where the source of the idea came from, VIA Senior Vice President Val Brian Buchanan, who brought it up at a staff meeting and to the credit of the marketing people, they ran with it. So it proves that engineers can have imaginations. We just want to show one of the spots for everyone so they can take a look at this campaign. Nicely done. Thank you very much. You told it was a mom, three exclamation marks, right? That's the mom. Thank you very much for that. Lastly, before the Board Meeting, we were showing a rotation of slides. Some of them were from our first meeting of our VTAC, our VIA Transit Advisory Council, but the other was from an art exhibit which is currently on display at what was formerly known as the Westside Multimodal Center and now the Grand. We teamed with the City of San Antonio's Parks and Recreation Department to host this traveling exhibit for the city's Bravo for Art Ability Never Too Old to Create program. This exhibit showcases the work of senior citizens from across the city and it's been on display at the Grand since the beginning of February. We'll be there for the remainder of the week. If you haven't seen it, you should stop by because there's some really remarkable pieces of art there. And we held a reception on February 16th to celebrate the art and the artists. Our partnership with Parks and Recreation is just one of the many ways VIA has of forging connections with the art community. So first of all, I would like to recognize the Recreation Supervisor with Commander's House Senior Center, Gloria Dela Cruz Sandoval, for her efforts in organizing this. So Gloria, would you please there? Gloria. Joining her tonight is the program's art instructor, Lily Baltazar. Is Lily here? Lily, Lily, I had a question. Did you paint the dome at the top of the building? That, your painting, right? Yeah, she painted the dome at the Grand, which, good choice, good choice of subjects.
I have painted several buildings and the dome.
Excellent. Oh, I'd like to see those. Thank you so much. We also are fortunate to have several of the actual artists here tonight. So if you would stand as I call your name, Richard Marquez. Gloria Martinez. Gloria Martinez. Betty and Marvin Gordon. There we go. Feliz Saucedo. Vera Richardson. Lupe Munoz. And James Abernathy. So I just want all the artists to know how very much I've enjoyed walking into that lobby every day and seeing your artwork on display. It really makes it a special place and I am particularly happy to learn that you are never too old to create. So thank you very much. And that is my report.
Jeff, thank you for that outstanding report and to all those that have been recognized this evening, congratulations. To our many partners, to our staff, to our concerned citizens, and of course, our riders. It's great to have you all here. Thank you so much for attending our meeting. And I didn't realize, Jeff, that we have so many talented staff members. We'd love to hear some of those karaoke singers. Maybe during a break, we can get entertained. Board members, any comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, yeah. Silence is definitely.
But thank you all very much, to all of you that were honored this evening. Item number four, Citizens to Be Heard.
Madam Chairwoman, we have seven citizens to be heard tonight. And the first citizen is Lori Zertucci.
I just have a question and maybe you could send me a letter or something. One time, I don't remember the date, but I rode the van for an hour and 52 minutes. So I called the concerns line and I spoke to a lady named Ylonda and I told her and she took my concern. And then she called me back and said, "You were the one that made the concern about riding the van for an hour and 52 minutes?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "Well, VIA is allowed now to keep a person on the van for two hours. So my question is, if a person is on a vehicle for an hour and 59 minutes, does that mean they don't have a complaint because they're one minute short?" That's all I'm, that's all my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fidel Castillo.
I want to thank everyone here. Sundri, I was advised to come and speak to you directly. I had an issue here on your VIA transit bus back in December. The information's there in the envelope. I did an open records request and it seems like this Mr. Bailey might be in violation as far as not wanting to give me what had occurred there on VIA back during Christmas. I would, I'm on the committee with the Cecil Chavez and I'd gone to attend Mrs. Delora's witness lecture. Something was happening downtown San Antonio on December 4th. I'm not really sure what it was. But I was brutally taken off the VIA transit bus by a supervisor that falsely accused me of criminal trespassing. I had my pass, I had everything, I don't know why this was done. But now they're not wanting to give me the open records request that I made and they're taking my phone. The passenger I have a witness, because this is my regular bus, I ride at 9:15 every night. It says she had given or tried to give the phone back to me, but the supervisor, this Mr. Joseph Wilgan, took the phone from her and told everybody to get on the bus, the bus was leaving, because they tried to tell them that I didn't do anything. Nobody would listen. So I'm on several mental impairment groups here. It seems like I've identified maybe what could be a problem for our citizens in San Antonio. I've worked throughout the United States on post-traumatic stress disorders and I'm not saying that these men are, but I have a test that we do give out. If maybe we can have that monitoring done to make sure that no one's being put in danger. And I was very scared for myself that night. And why, you know, I don't know. But we have a coalition here in San Antonio that works on post-traumatic stress disorders. And our men are going in circles, you know? I've been riding VIA for, since my disability, it's been almost six years. And I just had the wrong pass and I told them I can't take care of it, the VIA is closed until the next day. Why the supervisor did this? I hope you could please just make sure, because my lawyers are feared they might destroy the tapes, if you can please just get those for me. You have my contact there and everything. You know, I mean, VIA is great, I've been riding it and it gets me where I gotta go. I don't know why that's done, but we are identifying a need to understand post-traumatic stress disorders. Our veteran drivers are having to deal with a lot of things in our citizens and there was recently a resolution that was done here that directed it towards certain citizens saying. And why that's being done, I'm not real sure, you know? But maybe if we can look into not targeting, is what it says. I don't know why it's being done. I don't know why I've been brought here, but you know, we can make a big change by making sure that our citizens, as far as, I've been buying my VIA pass every month, you know, it's my transportation, I'm disabled and to have to deal with this and then for these not wanting to give me the tapes to show that, you know, I'm having to go to court over this now. They say I'm a terrorist, you know? I told Charlie Gonzalez is my friend, I told him, "I'm gonna talk to Charlie when I get out." You know, I lost my job over this, you know, and, you know, it wasn't very fair. Please, I need your help, okay?
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Larry Johnson.
Good evening. First of all, a warm welcome to all you new VIA Board members and especially to Chair Andrade, whom I had the pleasure of meeting last week. It has been my privilege and for the most part, my pleasure to speak to a great many VIA Boards over the past 35-plus years. We have indeed come a very long way during that time. We've discovered together the importance of dialogue and you have learned the benefits of valuing and integrating the ideas and opinions of the public when forming board policy. You've come to see me no longer as an obstructive adversary, but rather as an eager partner. I want to go on record to publicly thank VIA for finally changing its recertification policy and process, making it now much more customer-friendly. Thank you also for allowing drivers to actually knock on the door or ring the doorbell of a VIA Trans customer's residence to let them know that the van has arrived. And thank you for permitting VIA Trans customers to call "Where is my ride?" 15 minutes after the scheduled pickup time instead of 20. These policy changes have, maybe seem small, but to us, the users of VIA Trans, they are significant. They show VIA management's greater desire and willingness to understand and respond to the special needs and concerns of passengers with disabilities. There are still miles to go before we sleep. And this being the year of the 25th anniversary of the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, what a perfect time for the VIA Board to take on a new challenge. And therefore, I call upon you, the VIA Board, to... Thank you. ...to adopt a proactive employment policy of outreach and recruitment for qualified persons with disabilities. More than two-thirds of all disabled adults of working age are not working. Billions of dollars are being spent by the state, the county, and the federal government in private monies for disability-related expenditures each year. Ten times as much is spent on keeping disabled people dependent, taxpayers, tax users rather, to $1 being spent on helping them become taxpayers and become self-sufficient in our community. Work not only brings income, it gives dignity to the individual. And so my challenge to you is to make VIA a model employer of persons with disabilities in 2015. Thank you.
Thank you.
Damon Mason.
What do you say, I used to be a trustee, is I, Damon Mason. Chairman and the woman and the Rade, welcome, welcome aboard. I mean, too bad, too bad he didn't have the means to properly, probably, probably welcome you, so. But anyway, I, first thing I wanted to, you know, to get started with is, is, why is it now? Why is it just a few minutes ago that I saw, that I saw, that I saw this response letter for the first time? Why is that? Now, okay, now, I looked at your response to the issue that I brought up and, and, and I, and I am not, I am not satisfied at all. But North American Bus Industries has made it quite clear that its idea of a motor coach is little, is nothing, is a little more than an over glorified cow trail. This is even more the case with the, with the, the CNG articulated, the CNG articulated motor coach, which, which, you know, which shakes, which shakes, which shakes violently and arouse, shakes and riles with such violence that I'm frightened, that the coach is going to fly apart one of these days, in the not-too-distant future. Airbag upon transit, I'm going to insist that you deny, that you deny North American Bus Industries any more repeat commerce for, 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 in the near and distant future. Okay, let's see, you're, okay, let's see. I'd like to know, I'd like to know how, how many of your transit police officers have a frontline combat military prologue? Because, you know, because I, could I guarantee, could I guarantee, could I guarantee you, those that do, that do have that, that prologue, yeah, it's going, it's going to show, it's going, it's going to show, it's going to show in their behavior. And I'm not liking, you say here that a major economic collapse is not, is not, is not expected nor is it going to all become obsolete? Well, if you are wrong, if you are wrong, we all pay the price, we all pay the price.
Ferris Hodge.
Thank you. You did not introduce the new chairman of the VIA Board. Since you've been in office, you have never introduced a new chairman. You have never introduced the new board members. Everybody before you have always introduced the new board members and the new chairman. And if you are a board member, how can you work for VIA and be a board member? Because there's a lot of confidential stuff that's supposed to be just with you guys, okay? Now, I told y'all a few weeks ago, about two months ago, that downtown, one of the young ladies got off the bus and sit down, been down maybe five minutes, and the supervisor or police, wherever y'all want to call each other, asked him to leave. We can sit there three or four hours before the city police can ask us to move, don't we're not doing nothing, not fighting or anything? One lady sat up there and fell off to sleep. She had her clock, it rang at a certain time. She was not drunk, crazy, stupid, nothing like that. So y'all secured, better back off. I'm not gonna keep saying that. Number three, if you put over $1.35, you do not give us our extra change. One lady put in 60 cents, I put in 5 cents. Y'all had cards that y'all would give us and y'all say, "Oh, no, we're just gonna put it in the regular." If we're short 5 cents, you will not let us ride the bus. The man was 70, 80 years old, he was short 5 cents. The bus sit there. And Mr. Archer, you're the cost of them taking those cards from those bus drivers. If it's 50 cents, that's our money. And you can fix those machines where it give out $1, $1.50 or whatever. So you ripping us off. VIA Board is ripping us off. And eventually, I'm gonna have to write to Attorney General. I did that when, when the city was playing games. Y'all not gonna play with our money. Our money is just as important as your money is. And who can tell us, why come you tell us that you can't give us back $1, $1.50 or whatever? The next thing, the senior citizens need to be moved back to the age of 55. Now, I'm gonna sing my song right quick. You are my sunshine, my only sunshine. And then the next thing, when y'all have these parades, y'all need to have restroom. MLK only had two restroom, my great nephew, he was complaining about it. And other people was complaining about it. The 5K, we didn't, we didn't know where none of y'all supervisor was, we didn't know where anybody was, we couldn't go to Travis Park. I walked about three or four miles and found, the policeman said, "They moved the way over there." Nobody told us anything. So y'all need to get y'all sack together. And that West Mardro, whatever you call it, that's a joke, J-O-B. Y'all have a nice day. You are my sunshine, my only sunshine. You make me happy, when skies are gray, da-da-da-da.
Mary Donahue.
See, y'all didn't know I could sing, did you? All right.
Mary Donahue.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day, okay?
You too, thank you.
Good evening. My concern happens to, is very recent. It was yesterday, yesterday I had called to cancel a long-term subscription pickup and return ride from home to my work and then my work back home because I was under the weather. I was put on hold for, I don't know, I don't know how long. That is not acceptable, especially when you're not feeling very well and you're waiting to, we're waiting to call coworkers to let them know you won't be in. I finally got ahold of somebody and come to find out the system was down. Well, I will, I will accept that. And they were taking, they were taking cancellations by hand manually until the system was up. But what would have been nice is if I could have, there could have been an option, an automated cancellation line where we could, where I could cancel. In addition to a, well, besides the reservation line. But if there's, there's some way, some way we could cancel and make reservations other ways besides going through reservations, such as online or on the phone. If we, on the phone, if we could add PCAs when we make reservations using the automation, that would be wonderful. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pete Donahue.
Good evening. Okay, well, let me try to step lively here. Mary's already said some of what I'm gonna say, but let me get down to business. First of all, there's a situation concerning fixed route that I want to make, make a suggestion on. I know that there's been a lot of work that the VIA Board has been doing as far as adding and improving fixed route service. And that's great, they need to be commended for that. We live in an area where we do- We live in an area where we do not have a bus that runs on Sunday, the 509. And some Sunday service on that route would be very much appreciated, and it would be great.
If we could get thirty-minute service during peak hours during the week.
Okay, do I need to repeat that? Okay, basically what I was saying, that we live on the Route 509, and we currently don't have Sunday service on that line. And it would be nice if we could get it. Another, VIA has been adding Sunday service to a lot of routes, and we'd like to see 509 added to that, added to that route. And more frequent service on the weekdays, especially during peak hours. Currently, it only runs once an hour. It'd be nice if we could get thirty-minute service during peak times. That'd be super. Where we are, we're right near buses, routes 550 and 551. Once upon a time, those buses stopped at both San Antonio International Airport and North Star Mall. Now, if we want to go to either one of those destinations, first, we got to pass right by our intended destination and transfer at the North Star Transit Center to backtrack to go to the airport or North Star Mall. Would very much appreciate it if those two stops could be added back into the 550 and 551. And it's, an action like that could make it be the difference between whether or not we use fixed route or VIA Trans. That would help lessen our dependence on VIA Trans. Okay, VIA Trans, I'm trying to step lively. We understand that there's been a proposal to cut back on reservation hours during Saturday. And my wife alluded to this a bit ago. There are tools out there that if you, if VIA would put them in the hands of their VIA Trans patrons, could, would be an alternative solution to doing that. For example, being able to make reservations on the web twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-sixty-five. Other Texas cities do it. I was just checking out one earlier today. Houston has that service. Austin does. Dallas, Toronto, others. And also, some real-time ride tracking would be very much appreciated. You can, if a fixed route patron can call a stop number, can call in a stop number and be told that the bus is going to be arriving at a certain amount of time, a VIA Trans patron should be able to, via smartphone app or just calling, "Where's my ride?", type in their ID number and be told your bus will be, your ride will be arriving X, in X number of minutes. And something, and one more thing along that line is that it would be nice if when we get the courtesy call before the bus arrives, that we're given an approximate time of arrival instead of just being told your ride is coming soon. Our experience has been soon as anything from the van being outside your door to having to wait thirty minutes. That is unacceptable these days, and especially when other cities and towns are doing what we're asking for.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
There are no more citizens, there are no more citizens to be heard.
Now, we'll go into agenda item number five, which is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion as second. Any questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number six, our annual independent audit report.
You got it? Madam Chair, and the Board of Trustees, I am Kimberly Weber, and I'm here from the Audit Department. And I'm here to announce this agenda item. We're here today to have Padgett Stradman here. The agenda item I'm introducing tonight is the presentation of the results of the annual independent audit report for 2014. With us tonight, to provide a summary of the audit results, is Joel Perez from Padgett Stradman. He's the partner there. And we have Carmen Garcia from CC Garcia &amp; Company, who together comprise the VIA external audit team. Can you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Good afternoon. My name is Joel Perez, and I served as the lead engagement partner for the audit for VIA for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2014. And what I've done is, I've put together a brief presentation. We met with your audit committee earlier this month and presented the results of the audit in a little bit lengthier type of presentation. So I'll be very brief today. I've summarized the presentation. However, if there's anything in the audit report or the management letter that you've received in your package that you want me to expand upon, please, by all means, let me know, and I'll be more than happy to discuss those items with you. The table of contents, you know, regarding my presentation is included in here. I'll give you an introduction to the service team. I'll go through the results of the audit in general, and then next steps after that, and then close out with some management letter comments. The management letter comments I have in here are really just for your information. I won't go into any details regarding those since I've already met with your, met and discussed those with your audit committee, but I can expand on those upon your request as well. The engagement team consisted of myself in addition to my concurrent review partner, which was Michael Bryan, and he's basically my second pair of eyes. He makes sure that I've essentially, with respect to your audit approach and your audit report, that I've crossed all the Ts, dotted all the Is. So he was really coming in behind me and making sure that I hadn't missed anything significant. Michelle Hyde was the lead manager, and she was supported by Ashley Lejo. She was really the one that, Ashley, that was in the field throughout the course of the engagement. In accordance with the contract that we have with VIA, we have subcontracted twenty-five percent of the contract with a minority participation firm, which is Carmen Garcia. And I have Ms. Garcia here this afternoon to just share with you her role in the audit, and that way you can hear that directly from her.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm pleased to be here with you today. We have subcon, we perform on the VIA audit this year, and we had subcontracted twenty-five percent of the audit. We worked on areas in the balance sheet, the cash, the inventory, capital assets, accounts payable, and accrued expenses. We worked on the single audit, and we worked on the pension. And we were happy to do that. We had no problems. And I'll turn it back over to you, Joel.
Thank you, Carmen. The results of the audit, you know, basically in one slide here, as a business-type organization, VIA reports on a full accrual basis, meaning is more in line with your commercial-based type reporting. The results is, at the financial statement level, which is the first part of the report that you have in front of you, we're issuing an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can issue in a set of financial statements. Think of it as a, as a clean bill of health or a good, clean audit. As a recipient of federal dollars, you're subject to an audit in accordance with singular, the Single Audit Act or Circular A-133. That is an audit of your grants and basically going through the process of assessing how you spend those dollars, making sure you're spending those dollars in accordance with the grant objectives. We selected two programs for testing. The more significant one, which is your US Department of Transportation, your FTA grant, was the more significant one. And then there was a smaller one that we selected this year that included the Transportation Investment, Generous Economic Recovery Grant. Those two audits were subject to audit for fiscal year fourteen, and we're happy to report we had no findings under either one of those to report. And as a result of the procedures performed, we are also issuing an unmodified opinion, clean bill of health as it relates to your grant audits. And then the last report that you have in there is a report on compliance with laws and regulations. While it's not an opinion or an attest type of report that we are issuing, it is a report that is required us to report any exceptions to compliance with laws and regulations. We report those are findings. However, we noted none as a result of the procedures, and therefore, there are none to report in here. Quick question, or comment rather, on the draft that you have in front of you, that you received in your package. It's reported as in draft form. There's some minor edits that are going to be changing when you get the final one, but it's really more cosmetic stuff. Some of the numbers changed after, after we released that draft. We just want to highlight that to you in case you were to compare the two reports, you'll see some differences. But the financial statements, the numbers themselves in the financial statements are not changing. It's just a couple of numbers throughout the, throughout the different pages in the report. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that, that report, the final one will include those revisions. Once we finalize the report, VIA, as it has in the past, prepares a comprehensive annual financial report. It's a comprehensive report that gets submitted to the Government Finance Office Association for its review. And that report will be prepared here shortly after we issue the report, and scheduled to be submitted by the end of March in accordance with the GFOA deadline. So that's the next steps. And then lastly, is the management letter comments. I won't go into any detail on this, you asked me about any one of them specifically, but the highlight I want to make, there's three types of control deficiencies we're required to report. Material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and control deficiencies. We're happy to report we had none of those for fiscal year fourteen. The items included in these next couple of slides are basically best practices that we're bringing forth to management and your audit committee, and ultimately the Board of Trustees. That concludes our presentation. I'd like to open it up for any questions the Board may have.
Members?
Madam Chair, the Audit Committee, which we met on the twentieth of February, and I'd like to personally congratulate the whole audit team, Mr. Wallace, and the job they did. The auditors came in and everything was ready for them. It was a smooth audit and management on the whole. Unmodified, clean bill of health.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Board? Trustee Marty, thank you so much for your service on this committee. So do you have a motion for approval? Second? We have a motion as second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great to see you, Carmen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, financial closeout for fiscal year 2014.
Good evening. I'm going to briefly cover a few matters related to the financial closeout of fiscal Doesn't appear the PowerPoint's loaded. I can go through this without a PowerPoint, and hopefully you can follow along with the document in front of you. Fiscal year fourteen, we ended on September 30th, 2014, in a very sound financial condition. The stabilization fund and the working capital fund, both had sixty days each. Stabilization fund is our rainy day fund, and then our working capital fund is a fund that we use to absorb the ups and downs of the business cycle. Each of those were funded at thirty-three point four million dollars. We also had a capital reserve funded at forty-seven million. That reserve came in a bit stronger than we had anticipated for the year due to timing on capital expenditures, but that forty-seven million dollars is programmed for various projects. Cash and investments finished the year at two-hundred-and-seventy-one point three million dollars as of September 30th, up seventy-seven point three million dollars from the prior year. The reason for the increase was largely that we had issued bonds, both the ATD and MTA issued bonds. Most of those funds had not been spent as of year end. The increase in cash and investments was slightly higher than we had anticipated due to timing of capital projects. I want to mention that VIA's financial results for the year came out very favorable, and that our financial projections do reflect long-term fiscal stability and sustainability. We had a year where sales taxes came in over nine percent higher than the prior year, as you'll see in note in the audit report, and so it was a very good year. On the second page of the PowerPoint, we note that there's a budget amendment that we're asking the Board to approve for fiscal year fourteen. It's really attributable to planning studies, which, and I'm going to just cover these very quickly, and we'll get into these in more detail in a moment. But planning studies had a three-point-one-million fiscal year fourteen impact. We had pension that had a three-point-seven-million-dollar fiscal year fourteen impact. And then the net variance of the other items was one-point-six-million below budget. And so the requested budget amendment amount is five million, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. There is a streetcar allowance account also that we're setting up to appropriately reflect on VIA's financial statements, the streetcar project expense that may not ultimately pertain to the final construction project. And I want to mention that this allowance account on our balance sheet goes against the asset value. On the income statement side, at the time of the Operational Oversight and Finance Committee meeting, we had reported that the expense side of that would reside in non-operating. Subsequent to that, in consulting with our auditors, it was determined that it would be in operating. And so that's the way it's reflected on the financial report, although your memo says non-operating. I want to mention that there is no budget amendment impact from that allowance account simply because on operating expense, it's reported as a component of depreciation expense because it reduced the asset, the asset value in a similar way to depreciation. And so we don't get an approved budget that includes depreciation. We only get a budget for the non-cash items and items that reflect our operations other than depreciation. And so therefore, it did not impact the five-point-two million. On the next slide, there's a little more detail included on both the planning studies and the pension items that I just mentioned. The planning study item is for reclassification of planning study costs from the balance sheet to the income statement. And there is a three-point-one-million-dollar impact in FY14. That's a current period reclassification in the financials. And then a two-point-nine-million-dollar prior year impact, which was a restatement of prior years that you'll see in the financials. The reclassification resulted from a review of costs being carried as assets that more properly belong in expense since they're not tied to a specific asset. And so the treatment of moving those items to expense is in accordance not only with generally accepted accounting principles and what the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association comes out with, but also we checked with other transit agencies. And so the costs where they were in the conceptual phase and they were not tied to a specific project are the costs that were moved. Once we have a project that we're doing, for instance, environmental studies, those costs remained capitalized. The adjustment to the pension expense was based on plan assumption changes and treatment of the cash and expense figures. And so the plan assumption changes that increased pension expense included a change in the investment return assumption, going from eight percent to seven and a half percent, a change in the employee longevity assumption, where the attrition at VIA is lower, and then also an increase in how long people are living. The pension change does not affect VIA's cash position or reserves in any way. The amount booked is an accounting entry only, and it does not impact the unfunded pension liability. Likewise, I should mention on the reclass of the planning studies, that was simply moving it from one bucket to another. There wasn't any additional cash involved or anything like that. And so the requirement is, of course, that we have a budget that covers the operating expenses, and so moving that to a new bucket necessitated us covering that piece as we've outlined here. On the streetcar allowance account, if you flip to that slide, you'll see that in July of 2014, we put the project on hold to assure alignment with the city of San Antonio's development of a transportation plan. VIA is also updating our own. VIA is also updating our own long-range transportation plan. And so the allowance equals 4.882 million or 25% of the costs that have been incurred for the streetcar project and are carried on VIA's balance sheet as an asset as of September 30th. The 25% allowance is believed to be a prudent amount to book in the event that the final project does not fully reflect the original project for which the expenses were incurred. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to get into any of that in more detail if you have any questions.
Board members, any questions? Bobby?
Chairwoman, just for clarification purposes, we spent a lot of time talking about this in Audit Committee the other day. And so because it involves five and a half million dollars, can you just kind of recap for us in layman's terms with respects first to the pension piece? So on the pension piece, that was generally just a reclassification from one side of the books to the other because we caught something.
Planning costs.
And so that was the identification of your, by your team of that. We recognized it. And so this is a correction mechanism. The action that you're asking for us today is to, we identified the correction, you're coming to the board to appropriately restate it, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then everybody always gets excited about streetcar issues. So with respects to that piece, that is also something that we talked about last year prior to approving the budget, how we're going to carry that streetcar expense, correct?
That's correct.
And this is again, just ratification or correction of that issue as well too, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's all I wanted to just clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If necessary, I'll make a motion to approve the report and the request as, as laid out.
Second.
You have a motion to second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Lang. Did I get that right?
Yes, Lang, rhymes with flange.
Thank you, thank you. Please be patient. Eventually I will learn how to pronounce all the names. All right, we will move on to line services policy and design standards. Mr. Manning.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. It is me, the great texting engineer. Joined with me today is Tracy Manning, our manager of service planning. We're going to go through some updates to our line service policies and design standards. Design standards does not mean the actual look and feel of any of our, any of our assets out there. It's just the name we utilize for this. But basically tonight, we are asking for your approval and adoption of this so that we can meet our FDA requirements and our Title VI requirements as we move forward in providing our line service out there. So with that, Tracy will walk through this. And then I will conclude this with a couple of updates on the UDC and how we're working through that process also.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Again, what we're doing is taking this forward just to ensure that we comply with our Title VI requirements and to make sure that our fixed route service is using the best practices for availability of service, comfort and convenience of service. And the, we do have to report our Title VI submittal every three years to the FDA. And so what is the Title VI requirement? It's in accordance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. It's just to ensure that our service design and operation practices do not result in discrimination based on race, color, or national origin. And the same for any groups of persons that we're not discriminating against. And how do we meet the Title VI requirement? Well, there's four service standards that are required. That's for vehicle load, the headways, the frequency of the routes, the on-time performance, and the service availability. And then we're required to have two service policies, and that's for the distribution of transit amenities and for vehicle assignments. Then we also cover our major service change policy and monitoring the service. And we also state what our service equity analysis requirements are for to ensure that we don't have disparate impact or disproportionate burden impact. The summary of the changes from the old document, the previous document to now, is the longer hours of service is, I think it's back in 2007, we actually extended our hours of service at one hour earlier in the morning and one later for our lineup service at night. And the route performance index was added as an analytical tool. And we deleted flex routes and we added the BRT category where the primo is. We adjusted the previous on-time performance threshold to include weight assessment for very frequent service. We replaced the commuter service with van pools. And we're asking to authorize the president and CEO to provide up to 240 hours annually for service to the community. Added to the shelter criteria and changed the score to 15 points, a little more lenient, and added some flexibility on that shelter placement as we're going out and trying to add 1,000 shelters at this time. This is basically the requirements that we have to come for public process, to go out to the public and seek information when we're making changes to routes, and then where we get, where we have to provide an equity analysis. And so basically any new routes or elimination of routes, but also for public processes, if there's any 10% change in the miles, 10% change in the headways. But for the equity analysis that we have to maintain and turn into the FDA, we use a 25% increase/decrease in miles and a 50% change in headways.
As part of this process, we've taken this through the OOF Committee for two months. And as part of the discussion during that committee, there was some discussion about the Unified Development Code and VIA's role in that. So I just thought I'd spend a couple of seconds to update the board on that and how that plays into this. But based on going through the long-range plan and part of the agreement you have this evening before you also, it's some contribution of dollars, but it also involves our involvement in the UDC update that's currently going on throughout the city. So based on our long-range plan, we're going to push for a couple of things this year as part of the UDC update. We'd really like to formalize the process for the plan and development review. We would really like to be a part, a signator on a plan and development review. So when a development is coming into the community, it is passed over to VIA for some look at either bus stop placements or transit access and different things like that. So that is something that we will be trying to formalize as part of the review process with, with the city. Also, traffic impact assessment, we want to make sure that the developers and, and the community is looking at the bus routes and the different things as they bring these developments into the community and how can we better the transit network and the transit access to, to these different nodes or developments. In transit facility definitions, staff has spent some time defining parking rides, transit centers, and putting some definition to those products, basically so we can help educate those that are developing out there in the community. So we want to make sure that tries to get codified as we move forward into the process. So with that, this evening, we are asking for the board's approval to, to have the CEO submit this as our update to the design services and line standards, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, yes.
I just have one comment on the, the UDC. When you go in for the changes, if there's a, as you, as you talk to the city about, about making those changes and being a part of the review processes, that we also look at, as we've talked before, about making sure that the whole transit and transportation system has its own chapter of the code. So that way, they don't have to go from one part of the code to the other. It's all, it's all in one chapter, all, everything related to traffic and transportation, public transportation specifically.
That, that's a good comment. We have started those conversations with city staff.
That's good news. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you very much. Any other questions, members? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We'll move on to agenda item number nine, Ingram Transit Center upgrade. Ms. Rodriguez and Gary Glasscock.
Staff is in process of performing a comprehensive assessment of all of our operating and passenger facilities. One element of this assessment is to compare the conditions of our existing facilities with current and projected needs. Tonight, Abigail is going to be talking a little bit about a proposed improvement package for Ingram Transit Center. This will be the first that we'll be making over the next several months. We'll be coming back to the board with results of our studies and also additional improvement proposals for our existing facilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Abigail and, and I might say that this presentation is for information only. We're not seeking any action this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Good evening. As Gary mentioned, this is an update on the Ingram Transit Center renovations and green space conversion. As a, just to orient you, Ingram is in kind of the northwest corridor or quadrant of San Antonio, very close to Ingram Park Mall. The red lines you see on this map are the 11 routes that serve the Ingram Transit Center. The blue lines are our other routes in the system. So there are three routes that come from Ingram into downtown, the Looper, which goes around 410 and on Military on the south side, and then routes that circulate through that, that northwest quadrant. This is an aerial shot of the Ingram Transit Center as it exists today. Ingram is the road there on the bottom of the slide. Northwestern is, is there on the kind of upward side. We do own two parcels of property. The original Transit Center property was purchased or was constructed in 1995. In 2010, we purchased the larger parking lot you see to the north for expansion. These are some statistics about the Transit Center and the service we do provide out of there. 11 routes, very early in the morning, very late at night, seven days a week. We see about 4,000 passengers daily through the center. It is quite old. We did expand the parking lot and we also provided a direct connection to the Leon Creek Greenway. And that was constructed in 2011 as a partnership with the city of San Antonio's Parks and Recreation Department with the Howard Peak Greenway system. And it is located in City Council District 7. However, Council District 6 is very close, right across the creek. The proposed improvements have a variety of, of goals in mind. We do want it to be a safe and secure facility. We want to upgrade the, the facility to make it more appealing to our passengers, more accessible, healthy, innovative, a model that we can replicate at other transit centers as we go through the asset management process, and also award-winning. The Trailhead Connection did win an award in 2012 as a partnership with the city and with green space for a trail connection. So we're very proud of that and we want to replicate that in others similar to that. This is an early sketch. We're in the early design phase and the lane modification is a big piece of the conversion. Let's see. Let me use this slide. The left-hand picture is the current condition and the right-hand side is the architectural rendering. You'll see a big change in the way that the buses circulate through the center. So we've taken out a very tight curve, straightened it a little bit, and eliminated that smaller parking lot. So that allows us to increase the safety, but also add the additional green space for the comfort of the passengers. We've also included a building remodel, some very, somewhat small changes, but significant, we think, for the passenger, updating a lot of the finishes, changing the way the restrooms operate and the entry operates for energy efficiency. We've added some sustainability elements such as rainwater harvesting, bio swales along the parking lot, and other native vegetation, that kind of thing. This shows a couple of the building remodel highlights. The top shot is the existing footprint of the building and the image on the right is the remodel. So we've added vestibules to the footprint and we've planned to place the vending machines in those vestibules, both for energy efficiency so we can capture air escaping and then also close the interior doors and still be able to utilize the vending machines if necessary. We've changed the way the customer information area is laid out. Unfortunately, they're not able to provide photo IDs at the center currently, so we've made that improvement so that they're able to do that now or in the future. This is another shot of kind of the architectural rendering of the improvements. And then this is just another, another version, less institutional, softened the, the look, add the stone veneer to kind of change the way that it appears to our passengers. This goes over the project cost. As I mentioned, we're in the very early stages, so we think that this can be clarified a lot as we, as we move through the project and we'll be bringing it back to committee as we go through the 95%. And so we will be developing a final scope. We're working with an architect right now and we're working through some operational impacts and the phasing to minimize the disruption for operations during construction. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. Board members, any questions? Yes.
Good evening. Completion timeline, what would it be? Eight weeks maybe or depending? You know, this is a rough estimate. I'm not holding you to that or anything like that, but I'm just.
You've been talking to Jeff a lot.
Well, it's always about the completion, you know?
Yeah.
We're expecting 95% design in the next two months, two to three months. So we'll go through the bidding process and then construction thereafter, so.
Yeah, I can see that. Another question I have for you is that I know at some of the places we have a B-cycle structures that are there. And also at the medical center, we also are trying something with bike shelters, you know, think parking garage for your bike. Since people are multi-modal, a lot of times people take their bike from their house to the transit center and then they're into downtown or what have you. Is there an integration for that here?
Absolutely. We, not the B-cycle because that right now is centered more around the downtown area, but we are making provisions for long-term bike storage. The bike lids that we have at the medical center, we are planning to include some of those in this design. We also have been looking at a bike repair kiosk. So it's where you can put your bike on the kiosk and there's a wrench and some other tools that are available for the individual to fix a flat or, and in fact, there's a pump available. So, you know, those kinds of amenities, we're actually looking at.
I like a lot more now.
Okay. So kind of a bike station. Becky?
Just two things. One, the, the changes that you're making it for sustainability are, are very good. And I think there's an opportunity to let SAWs know, number one, that this, that this is just the beginning of several prototypes that SAWs can use as an example of what, of the right thing to do. The cisterns, the drought tolerant plants and so on. And also when you talk to SAWs, because your, your, your footprint is changing, you will not have as much impervious cover.
Right.
So we should get a break on our stormwater fee as well. And then the second thing is the external of the building, I'm glad to see that it's changing, but perhaps there's a little bit of public art, maybe mosaic tiles or something that can be done to distinguish it.
We're actually planning public art. Thank you. I failed to mention that.
That's good news. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. I take it that we do not need the additional parking spaces that we're losing.
Correct. We feel like the parking on the, that we purchased in 2010 is about double what was there before. And we actually have more property on, in that other park.
There's never an overflow of that site.
Right.
And secondly, there's no external branding on this sustainable site. And I was just wondering about that, as there was with the first one, as there was with the existing.
Right. Right. We do have some monument signage that we're looking at adding in a different location, not associated with the building, but, you know, along the roadway, so separate.
And then I can probably add to that point that we do have another project going where we're going to look at implementing our new logo and trying to position it to be much more than a sign, but a wayfinding and just project a better image. So, this facility will be included with that particular project.
A more modernized branding type, yes. So it will be, you can anticipate incorporation of that.
Bobby?
Real quickly, Madam Chair, thank you. Just on the parking piece, I've heard Dr. Gambetta's question, but are there 46 new slots? Is that new slots in this plan?
No, sir. There, we're losing, I believe it's 37, and then there's 86 in the larger parking lot to the north, and we have, it's an add alternate in our budget to add an additional 46.
Okay. So that line item at 623 is for the new spaces?
It actually includes both. It's the repaving of the additional plus the additional 46.
And the 46, the, is that, that have an additional land cost in it as well or not?
No, it's on property loan.
And the source of funds for this project is?
We would be sourcing the funds from federal grant, and it would be 80% participation federal and, of course, our 20% local match.
So I suspect that this is maybe a project where we can't get creative on our DBE participation guidelines, and we won't, we'll be able to see what we're doing on that as well?
We suspect that there should be plenty of opportunity with this project.
And then my last question, maybe just more of a comment with respects to branding. As we kind of, you know, go through these new sites and we talk about branding, good point by Dr. Gambetta, however, I don't know where we are on a system-wide planning process on branding, and as opposed to just, you know, hey, we're building something new, let's slap the new logo on it. I mean, maybe it ought to be a more thoughtful, deliberate approach as we go out and rebrand and what that looks like, and it's a system-wide thing as opposed to a piecemeal thing. So, maybe that's something for a conversation at a future date. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we've actually engaged an architectural firm to do just as you just described.
Here are the comments. Doug?
Just briefly, that, and I was tempted to speak earlier when we talked about the Steve Lance Report and how we're dealing with our finances, and we seem to be doing fine. We're just making adjustments to our books. But as I see these projects, I'm hungry to see what we're doing system-wide, what the forward-thinking is, and one of the challenges, Madam Chair, as you well know, is that we're not as funded as some of our sister organizations. We're funded at a fraction of what they enjoy. And so, when I think about these projects and what good they're going to bring, you know, I want us to be ambitious about thinking system-wide, seeing what that looks like, and being, you know, forward-thinking, and frankly, addressing the issue of funding as a larger question for us. I think we do a lot with what we have, and I applaud staff for what they're doing in this particular case, but I do think we need to deal with that sort of elephant in the room, you know, because I think it'll help our community and our patrons in the long run.
Good point. Any other comments or questions? Tex?
I'm looking at, I know a lot of, we're talking about green initiatives, rain collection. Makes me very happy. I didn't hear anything about possibly just powering this by solar. I mean, what's to stop us from doing that, and really just, you know, taking that as an additional thing that's, you know, you don't have to worry about cost-wise. Just a suggestion, I'd like to see something like that maybe come into the equation.
We've actually, oops, sorry. We've actually looked, we have the architect doing an analysis for solar. Their initial look said that the roof was a little, the orientation wasn't optimal, but we are, we did consider it, and it may be something that's in an add alternate, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I will say that I'm looking forward to the art rendering, and also keep in mind that let's make sure that it's reflective of the community so that it feels like it belongs there. And Gary, if you haven't gotten the word or the memo yet, Jeff put every project on fast track.
He said no problem.
I've had no problem pointing it out, right?
I had one more point. I like it very much. It's safer, cleaner, greener, and better for our customers as far as their welfare. Do you have, in association with Doug's good question, do you have an assessment of impact on the financial aspects of this change for a million dollar change? Will it have a positive financial impact for us, or has there been estimates associated with that?
Well, we haven't gotten to the details yet. Obviously, there'll be some additional costs with keeping up some of the landscape, but as I mentioned earlier, this is part of really a compromise.
Will it attract more customers?
Yes.
In your view?
Right.
An assessment of that?
Yes, sir, and one of the things that we failed to mention is that when this facility was built, we had only 30 buses equipped with wheelchair lifts. Now, our entire fleet is equipped, and we certainly transport many more patrons with mobility devices, and so we're looking to improve some of the accessibility of the facilities as well with these projects. And then going back to your previous question, we'll be coming back to the Board with the results of our evaluation of each facility in light of our asset management plan. One of the goals of that plan is to ensure that we maximize each dollar that we spend on facilities, and as you mentioned, get a long-term spending plan for the major life cycle events associated with each facility, so that we're looking long-term to sustain our existing operation.
Yes. Excellent, and it has very, the accessibility point is very positive from what Pete had said during the Citizens to Be Heard, the points that he was making as well, with greater accessibility, and it should decrease the amount of VIA trans usage by increasing the amount of accessibility on the public transportation.
Anything else, members? Thank you very much. Great report. All right, we will now City of San Antonio Comprehensive Plan and Funding Agreement. Brian?
Good evening again. This evening, we were asking for the Board's approval to have the CEO as designee execute a funding agreement with the City of San Antonio related to our $250,000 contribution to the comp plan. The Board may recall, back in September 2014, the city requested that VIA consider a financial contribution to their comp plan since we would both benefit from that, and an effort to move forward together in developing a comprehensive plan for the city. And on November 18th, there'll be a board-directed staff to go ahead and work with the city to develop the agreement. Then on February 12th, the City of San Antonio took action for the draft agreement that is in your packet this evening. Staff has worked with the city on some points associated with our contribution, one of those being the appointment of a VIA representative on the steering committee. That did occur. We are on the steering committee. It also asked us to look at, looking at different land use in certain corridors. That is in the agreement also. And then also, just a general statement about working together to promote transit, land use, urban-type environments as we move forward and as the city grows associated with that. So this evening, we're just asking that allow the CEO to execute that agreement, and I'm here to answer any questions about it.
Members, questions? Do we all understand? Yes. Good. We're all in agreement. All right. So you need a motion?
I do need my own, yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The time is now 6:17. It's 8:00 PM, and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items that we will discuss during this executive session are as follow. Item 11, Legislative Update, which are executive session items pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney, and Item Number 12, entitled Legal Briefing, which is also an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. All persons who are authorized to attend the executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. Thank you. All right, it is now 6:52 PM. It is now 6:52 PM, and we are officially coming out of a closed executive session regarding Agenda Items 11 and 12. No deliberations of public policy or vote-taking occurred during the executive session. Well, Board members, we thank you so much for a successful first Board meeting for me. Thank you for your patience. I will learn that consent agenda items are taken up all at one time, and I will learn to pronounce your names better. I think I called trustee Marnie Marnie, and it's trustee Marn, so I will...
Anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. I will try to be lighter with a gavel. I'm sorry that, I'm so excited about VIA that it even showed in the, in how I hit the gavel. So, if there's any question about my enthusiasm and excitement about being part of this organization and being part of you all, you can certainly tell in the way I sounded the gavel this evening. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Any questions about adjourning? Any comments that anybody would like about today's meeting?
Thank you.
Perfect.
Meeting adjourned.